Good evening. This is the planning board meeting of February ninth, two thousand and ten. Please join us in the Pledgeable Agents.
Pledgeable Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a rather short agenda tonight, but if there is anything that is not on the agenda, I'll open up the meeting now for public comments. Yes, Ms. Quacks?
Hi, Rosie Ann Quacks, Wally Falls Road in New Market. I see you folks have been meeting almost as much as the council has, almost every other Tuesday, even more. And I can see that you're getting busy with some great projects that sound, they might not come to pass, but they sound good for the town, especially with the Mills. And I know Mr. Chinberg's been in and out quite a bit, and he's got something set up in the Mills already regarding a distribution center for sneakers and such. And I wasn't sure if the planning board was aware of the fact that it's being contemplated, well, passed by the council, but being contemplated that the code enforcement officer's hours will be cut from forty hours to twenty. And with all the projects coming up, I mean, we have, I'm not sure, Diane, maybe you could help me out, I'm not sure how involved Dan will be with the wells that might be coming on, the water tower, the self-applicable, other projects that I'm not at liberty to discuss, but there are some others that might be coming up. I know we have that pedestrian walk. If Three North Main Street goes through with those buildings, I imagine there'll be demolition, things to be done there. I know he'll probably work with Rick Malaski regarding fire code for maybe a burn, a practice burn. If the Mills come, demolition of the Eagles Building. And I know Dan is sometimes involved with the town planner regarding certain questions that she might have, applicants might have. I know I've been in there when people come in and out of the office. And he gives information. He's helped, you know, Brian Hart had nice things to say about him. And they come into the office, and he'll spend the extra five or 10 minutes with people. It saves the applicant money that's doing the work, because the contractor knows exactly what Dan's expecting of them. And if we didn't have him in the office to do this, I mean, it's going to be costing the homeowners more. And if we put him to twenty hours a week, sooner or later, which I think is going to be sooner, we're going to have to have him back full-time. And that's not fair to him. And I was just wondering, and I also have a log that he did. He kept a log for about six months, hour to hour, was what he does and how his time is taken up. And he has a pie chart to show you. And he doesn't have enough time right now to do the work he has to do. And with all these projects coming up, I don't know how it's going to compromise the quality of these projects in town. And I think it was shot sighted and unfair to even consider cutting his hours. And I don't know, I can get that copy to you so you could all look it over and see what you feel if his position being cut to twenty hours would compromise the quality of the work that New Market's depending on to have a quality project done in town. And the only way to do that is to have a full-time code enforcement officer. And I don't know if you just want to ask any questions or voice any opinions right now or just think about it and wait until I give you those copies and maybe discuss it at your next meeting. But I just think it's something that the planning board should be aware of. And I, as a town councilor, I am absolutely, and the budget committee, I am absolutely against it. I think it's detrimental to the health. And he doesn't just do the code enforcement. He does health and safety. He does a lot of other things in town. And I think it's not fair for him to be cut to twenty hours, absolutely not. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments in the public period? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. Having heard Councilor Quacks, are there any comments from the planning board? I'd like to make it this time regarding Dan Benson.
Is the status at this point at the budget committee? When is that? Does anyone know when that next meeting is?
Thank you very much. Yes?
From what I understand, even if we put that money back in there, it's still an issue of personnel, and the town administrator has every right to still put his hours to twenty hours from forty.
Thank you. I share some of your concerns in that we do have the Mills project and how we're going to have that move forward as quickly as possible, that we all want that to move forward. And with or without Dan or part-time with Dan, but we have to look to the town administrator to make sure that we're covered in that area. And the same with the proposed project we hear about tonight on Three North Main Street. So, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes of January nineteenth. I'm sure everybody has read those minutes. I think, are there any comments or corrections anyone has? Eric?
I have a change, page eight, line eighteen.
Where it says N A D nineteen twenty-seven. That should say N G V D nineteen twenty-nine or N A V D nineteen eighty-eight. Thank you, Diane.
I gave up my minutes.
On page three, there was a mis-typing. It should be N H D E S. And I apologize for not having the line number. It's towards the top.
Line twelve.
Line twelve. Should be N H D E S. New Hampshire D E S?
It says N P D E S.
Actually, that is, N P D E S is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So that is correct.
Okay, I apologize.
There is another change that we already gave to Erica. I don't have my copy in front of me. Erica, do you have the change regarding Val's question on the length of the river and the segment? If it's greater than three miles or not, could you read for the record, please?
Should be Val Shelton asked if portions of the river is less than three miles, whether that would fall under the category of a community river.
And the answer is no. It's, if it's less than one mile, if it's one mile, it would be a community river, under the state program. Three river, three miles.
Is for a rural community, which is a different classification.
And then there's a fourth classification.
Right, rural.
No, these are.
Is four, is natural.
Yeah.
Rural, rural, community, and community.
And community is?
Is what we suspect that New Market is all into that category. But the segment.
Yeah, rural community, it has to be under three miles, community under a mile.
That's correct.
Any other corrections, additions, deletions on the minutes? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You abstain. Two abstentions. I'm sorry. Two abstentions. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Richard Landry Jr., AIA Landry Architects, preliminary conceptual consultation for a sixty-five thousand square foot mixed-use development with a twenty-eight thousand square foot supermarket, an additional retail, restaurant, and office space. The lots are located at three, seven, and nine North Main Street, tax map U two, lots two eighty-six, two eighty-seven, two eighty-eight, B one zone. Good evening, Mr. Landry.
Evening.
Excuse me, Chairman, could, just for the public, could, maybe Diane briefly explain what the conceptual design review is, this process?
That'd be a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheldon. You read my mind, because I tagged the section in our regulations and the state law right before the meeting. And I think it would be helpful, just so that the planning board members, members of the public understand what the purpose of tonight's session is. It says in our regulation, "This meeting shall be directed at a review of the basic concept of the proposal and suggestions that might be of assistance in resolving problems with meeting requirements during final consideration. The board and the applicant may discuss the proposal in conceptual form only and in general terms such as the desirability of the development and proposals under the master plan." "Such consultations shall not bind either the applicant to the board, and statements made by board members shall not be the basis for disqualifying members or invalidating any action taken. Such decisions, discussions may occur without the necessity of giving formal public notice, but they may occur only at a formal meeting of the board. Preliminary consultation sessions are strictly optional to the applicant, and Mr. Landry has requested to be put on the agenda tonight for this purpose." So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Landry?
Well, as Diane said, this is really a conceptual-only review. I understand there's no, I'll speak of, you know, any technical aspects of the project or engineering that's ongoing. But really, I wanted to come before the board, show you the plan that is in place at this time. It's being tweaked and modified as tenants make requests for modifications. But this is where we're at right now, and I thought we were at a point where I should come before you and get your input, feelings towards the project, and help guide us as we move forward with the engineering for the project.
Just going to move this back a little bit. Can members of the public see this? Most of the planning board members have a copy. Is that better, Val?
It's just on the TV.
You can ask Chris to put me on it. Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. So basically, we have a twenty-eight thousand square foot supermarket. The final size is being determined now. It may be a little bit larger when we come before you with our formal application. Additionally, roughly thirty thousand square feet of retail, some office space. We have a bank tenant and potentially a coffee or a fast food use. The project has received a lot of, a lot of interest from tenants, and we're at a point where we're already, you know, to finance the project. And so, really, I'm just looking for input from you guys. Any comments, questions, concerns, before we go too far with engineering? Greg McElite is from Appledore Engineering here to hear what you might have to say. And we're moving forward from here.
I assume the, kind of the anchor is the supermarket. Have you?
Correct.
Have you tied up the supermarket tenant at this point?
We have the supermarket tenant.
Terrific. Congratulations.
It's been about a nine-month process that I've been working on this project. And I think my initial meeting with Diane was probably about seven meetings, seven months ago. So it's been a long process, but we're there. So it's exciting.
Can you tell us a little bit about the overall design? We have a New England mill town.
Yeah, I mean, really, the intent.
You're an architect.
Yeah, the intent will be, you know, to be as fitting with the character and architectural style of the town as possible. My idea is really to kind of, you know, nudge the downtown style in this direction. We would hope to create a streetscape along the front of the property to somewhat match what has been done on Main Street downtown, you know, with the light posts and so forth. You know, bring in sidewalks across the front of the property, potentially get a transit stop, you know, a bus stop at the property to bring the public transportation to the site. You know, really, the materials of the building at this point, what's being discussed based on the tenant's desires, is fitting with the Mill style, brick and, you know, natural, natural stones. And, you know, there's more work to be done on that point, but it's a, it's a style that fits the community.
Is the supermarket as your, as your grocery store, as your, as your base tenant, is that sufficient enough for you to move ahead with the application before?
We have other tenants besides them. There's probably, you know, there's a little bit more work to be done, but we're at a point now where we're very confident that, you know, we're, we're going to have a project that will move forward with the supermarket and one or two other tenants that, you know, we're in advanced stages of lease negotiation and so forth with, you know, we're, we've met, you know, the lender's threshold for what we're going to need to finance the project. And I've already been spending money on it, so. So, you know, I'm, I have full intention of moving forward.
Do you, do you think that our next meeting is in March? Do you think you will be in a position in March to submit your application?
It's, it's hard to say if it will be March. Like I said, there's some final decisions that are being worked out between, you know, the tenant, myself, and tenants within the project as far as kind of whose turf is what and who gets to dictate certain things. You know, Greg McElite will obviously have a lot of work to do. We've started some of it, and we've already had soils engineers on the site, and we've had, we got traffic, you know, accounts happening, you know, the end of this week and the next week for preliminary purposes. And I have a traffic engineer on board, and so there's a lot of work being done right now. But committing to being able to get in here in March, you know, with, you know, submit the application two weeks ahead of time, I can't say for sure, but I would like to be if I can.
I, I think the planning board demonstrated in the application for the Mill redevelopment and the subcommittee or the technical review committee that volunteered to work on the Mill application, that this planning board can move very quickly. And we're prepared to do that to support your application.
Well, that's, I've gotten that sense, and it's been a very, very positive constructive discussions that I've had with Diane and other members of the board. And I feel very, very good that we'll be able to work together very well. I have no doubt as we move forward, I don't feel there's going to be anything that will be, cause any controversy. I don't think we're going to be asking to do anything that is going to be undesirable to the town or to the board. And, you know, try and stick strictly within the ordinance and not step outside it. And I give you guys what you want. And I know the master plan has basically called for this exact development for a number of years. And that's one of the reasons why we chose the site we did. We looked at multiple sites in town, and we worked on multiple sites in town. And both the tenant, myself, and others involved felt that this was the, this was the site to move forward with, and this is the one we've been working with. Feel pretty, pretty confident about having something happen here.
Any other questions or comments from the planning board?
Just to follow up on that comment, so are there any concerns within our current site plan review regulations that you have questions of, and particularly in regard to lot coverages and any kind of ideas you might have for previous areas?
No, I mean, we're working pretty diligently to review everything as we go. And when I have questions, I've asked Diane. She's been very responsive, gotten back to me right away, you know, pointed me in the direction to get the answers if I couldn't find them. So I feel pretty, pretty well-informed as far as the process and what we're going to be needing to do. Obviously, it's Route 108, so the state will have involvement in both, you know, you know, two of the tenants on the, on the project will want to see a traffic signal at the, at the site. And quite frankly, the traffic study that was previously done for this property, using that and the expanded scope of this project, the traffic signal will be warranted anyway because of the inflows and outflows from the main entrance of the development and also the increased traffic that it's going to cause. But I don't want to get too technical.
George?
I wasn't that heavily involved, but I know there were some, I don't think there were showstoppers, but there were concerns by the residents across the street and.
We have the file from the previous project that was withdrawn two days before it was proposed for conditional approval, I might add. But that information is available in the planning office, including the letters from the abutters and the minutes of the planning board meeting. So if you want to come into the office and review those and...
I think I have most of it.
Okay.
I have a lot of information from that project. And various people have made me very well aware of everything that was said and done. And so I, you know, I'll probably come and get that stuff anyway, just to, just to have it in my files, but.
Well, it is available to you, and just let me know when you'd like to come in and look at it.
Thanks.
Anything else? Any other questions? I can open this up for public questions or comments at this time, if anyone in the audience. Yes, sir. Yes, please. Come up and give us your name and your address.
My name's Dave Legault, eleven North Main Street. I'm the abutter just to the south of this. So kind of have a vested interest, and was kind of wondering where my house is in relation to this.
Your house would be right on the other side of these trees.
What is the setback on property line there, ten feet?
It was twenty-five feet. Let me confirm that for you.
B one zone?
The B one zone. Let me confirm that for you, sir.
Oh, that's all right.
I do have it in the office.
That's good, twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet on the side and to the rear. I can't recall what the front setback requirement was.
And plans would be a.
It's to the closest building to your, to your house, from the property line, which is actually right kind of here. It's about forty-two feet, line of that building there. And this plan might change as we move forward.
Is this a vehicle access here?
Oh, yeah, that's kind of a secondary access, really.
Yeah. If there was a light, it would be.
Over here. It'd be over here, yeah. This would be more of a right in, right out only access, I believe.
And does this only include those three lots? Does this go into the field?
Goes into the field, out back a little bit.
Because the field's not listed on the.
Yeah, that was just brought to my attention.
I was kind of curious why.
The subdivision plan includes the backland?
It includes land from thirty-five Dame Road.
Which is owned by, who was owned, who was the owner of that property?
Perry's.
Okay, the notice should have included that. We want to make sure for the public hearing that's properly noticed. And yes, indeed, it's twenty-five feet.
Good job. All right. We all know that water, sewer, drainage is all substandard on that end of town. So will this project include any repairs to the infrastructure or improvements?
We haven't, you know, reviewed what will be necessary, but as we move forward, we have to.
Mr. Legault, this project will go through what's called site plan review, and there'll be a technical review by the town's consulting engineer, as well as the Public Works Department, Water Department. And those are the types of things that will be looked at, whether there's adequate capacity. And if there isn't, then what kind of infrastructure improvements will be necessary to make sure that there is adequate capacity for the project?
I mean, generally, this is in support of the master plan. It is a long, long-time requirement for the community. So I think, you know, I'm not opposed to it. I live right next door to it. I'm not terribly excited about living next door to it, but I'm going to try to make the best of it from protect my property and see what's right for the community. My mother-in-law actually owns the property to the very north of this, so we've got you surrounded. You know, similar concerns on that end, and drainage is a big problem over there. So that drainage definitely needs to be taken care of. I'm sure it will all be addressed. And the state, for the better part of the last ten years, have been planning this one-a-way corridor improvement between New Market and Durham. What's the status of that in terms of?
It's on the state ten-year plan. As a matter of fact, Mr. McMenamin, who is on the Strat Regional Planning Commission Board, I believe, wasn't that project recently reviewed by your committee? And it's, there is activity, it's going to start soon. Do you have any information on that?
No, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I know it's been delayed. I'm not sure.
It's been on the docket for quite a while.
Yeah, I'm at the public hearings years ago on it. You'd think by now it'd be shovel-ready, you know, and all this stimulus money would be available.
Each year it comes up, it's still on the plan.
It's always, yeah, it's always on the ten-year plan that's, you know, always ten years out, but.
But it's not funded for 2010, correct?
It's not on the list for this coming year, no.
And the reason I ask is because it may be relevant, because there are sidewalks planned, you know, all the way from where they end currently to the town line.
And I think, you know, we'll want to make sure that the plan is consistent with the state bikeway plan, as well as, you know, that the coast and the bus stop people are satisfied with how the improvements will be coordinated with their system as well.
Okay. The rest of it will all come out through the natural process, I guess, so.
That's right.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for the comments.
Any other public comments at this time? Yes, sir.
I'm happy.
Okay, I'll close.
Put his name in for the record?
Put his name in the record that he's happy.
That's Mr. Thorne.
That's Mr. Thorne, yes.
Who is in a butter?
In a butter, yes.
In a butter or part of the application? He's a coffee or fast food use.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period. Are there any other questions or comments from the planning board? George?
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Badger said about fitting into the architecture, and I heard what you said. I would suggest, you know, as part of the site plan review, you have to go to the advisory, heard advisory commission. And I think that was one of the issues on the last development. And I guess doing that sooner in the process might be more beneficial than waiting until later in the process.
I actually have some elevations of the, of the project. Obviously, I'm an architect. It's one of the first things I look at is what the building's going to look like. I just wasn't sure that that would be appropriate for tonight's meeting.
I'm not saying it was appropriate. I'm just looking at a conceptual model and, you know, and the layout right now. You might want to, all I'm suggesting is we do that sooner. That might make the process go smoother.
Right, I appreciate it.
Or bring those issues up earlier rather than later.
Right, yeah. Now, I'll have, start building designs from day one.
I mean, in essence, this is the entrance to New Market from the north. So it's the first thing people will see. And I think it's a great, if it's done well, it can be a great project for that, good entryway. Unlike, well, people don't like the southern entrance to New Market, so you can take the comments from that and use those to help you improve this one.
Good point.
Peter?
Just along those same lines, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, dealing with some things ahead of time sometimes makes it a lot easier as you go on. And I think, given the amount, the extent of the project and the amount of impervious surface, that drainage is going to be an issue that your engineer's going to want to really look into, because there is, there are drainage problems in the area, as was pointed out by Mr. Legault previously. And we became aware of them when we considered the previous development proposal. And as I said, the amount of impervious surface there is a challenge, and I'm sure he'll deal with it, but I just wanted to mention that.
We're already working on it, so.
Ms. Quacks? Yes, please.
I was on the advisory board when the other Three North Main Street came up. And it's an advisory board. And the guidelines we used were the architectural review along 108. But also, the other applicant would have had the same problem, not as much as this applicant does regarding the non-pervious. And it was discussed, and it seemed like he was going to use the process that they use up at UNH. They do have a pervious asphalt up there. And the only requirement to keep it pervious is that it gets vacuumed once a year, to get all the soot and dirt out.
Yeah.
So something like that might be. And also smart sponges and so forth. Those were discussed and probably were going to be used in the last application.
Does this property abut the town-owned land and if that is the case, do you, will there be like maybe thoughts of consideration of providing access to that land?
It does abut the town-owned land. It's kind of, if you look at the plan, it's kind of behind the, the finger on the, on the left side of the plan that goes back. Access to back there would be pretty tricky because based on previous surveys, there's a lot of wetlands way back there. If, if we could provide it, you know, I have no problems in doing so. It'd be a matter of getting wetland permits to, to cross those wetlands.
Thank you.
Eric?
I'd just like to say, I think it's a great project conceptually. I think it's great and it'd be great for the town to finally see some commercial development taking place. I do have a question for a later date, but I'd make a suggestion that you talk to state DOT early on-
Yep.
About all the driveway locations and, you know, proposed signal and everything. So get that squared away before we go too far.
That's what we're doing the traffic council this week for, so we can sit down with them and preliminary start the process.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. We're excited about this. As I said earlier-
Me too.
We like to thank the planning board and again, the technical review committee on the, on the planning board for the mills worked quickly and that was approved and we're ready to work with you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the majority of the agenda tonight. No, it's not, not ready, not yet.
Ready yet, okay.
Moving on, next is new business and old business. I have, I have three items. I don't know which one they'd fall under, so let's talk about them. One, Diane, can you give us an update on the pedestrian bridge application for the mills?
Oh dear, yes. We're still in the running for the grant. We had a very productive meeting two weeks ago with our executive counselor from this area. Her name is Beverly Hollinsworth and she was joined by the Department of Transportation Commissioner, George Campbell. And we, they came to New Market and John, Peter and myself and Michael LaBranch, our town council chairman, met with them and we showcased our project and they gave us some pointers on the types of things that we need to be preparing for. There will be an opportunity for the town to sell its application, if you will, to the State Transportation Enhancement Advisory Committee, I believe they call themselves, and they have received 53 applications and New Market is somewhere in the 30 with a 30-
Ranking.
Ranking project in that range, 30 to 35, I think he said. So, we're going to be given the opportunity to make a presentation and we're hoping that we'll be able to get a favorable response and that our application will be granted some additional points so that we will get funded. There are some concerns raised about the, whether or not there's matching funds available for the project and we're hoping for funding through the CIP program next year to help raise funding for the match. There's a 20,000, 20% match associated with the program, which amounts to about $110,000 and Mr. Jimberg has indicated a willingness to work with the town to come up with any shortfall and we're going to work to try to get some grant monies to help amortize those costs and we're hopeful that that will, will come to fruition. We're also looking to get some firmer indications of support from groups such as the Advisory Heritage Committee and possibly the Historical Society, that that might help show that there's community support for the project and hopefully give us a few more points and get us-
And then we had the meeting last Friday.
Yes, and the second part is we had a meeting, a sort of a dress rehearsal, if you will, at the Strat Regional Planning Commission. We met with, John and I met and Ms. Hollingworth also joined us. We met with the TAC Committee, which is the Technical Advisory Committee of the Strat Regional Planning Commission and we presented our project and it was very well attended. There were folks from DOT there as well as Federal Highways and of course, our fellow community representatives were present as well. And there were some good points on how we can, you know, better present our application and hopefully we'll be successful in our quest for funding. So I think, you know, we're, we're not there yet, but I think we have a pretty good shot at it, that's my take on it.
A reasonable shot, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Good, thank you.
I don't, not sure if I really heard correctly, but we in the, out of the 53 applications, we're in the middle?
Well, 30th. We were told that we were somewhere ranking about 35 and I'm confirming that with the Department of Transportation people. We have a third ranking application from our region.
Okay.
Okay, and so that the, the top three go to the state for consideration, but I understand this year that the Advisory Transportation Enhancement Committee is kind of modifying the approach to scoring of the applications and they're going to be, once you get to a cer, to the, to the table, so to speak, then they'll throw out the scores and then they'll have a different ranking and scoring of the project, so.
Third in the region sounds better than 30th out of 53.
Well, that's 53.
Well, there are eight regions.
There's eight, there's nine regions, actually.
Nine regions.
And that's the entirety of New Hampshire and it is a very competitive grant program and unfortunately, there's not enough money to go around, so.
I think the comment was, correct me if I'm wrong Diane, the comment was that there are $20 million worth of applications and $6 million to fund them. So, that's what, that's the competition.
The total project cost for New Market's application for the pedestrian bridge, the enclosed pedestrian bridge was $550,000 and 80% of that would be federal funds from the Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration and 20% from the town or the developer in combination of, funding in combination from both those sources.
Thank you. So that's the status on that. Secondly, I had down here an update on the floodplain discussion that we had. Eric and Eric.
I know I've done nothing on it. I was out of town. I had to have some information from Val and Diane. I pulled some other town floodplain regulations to, to show you.
Well, no, Eric Western was the other person on the subcommittee. I really would, I hope we can get together maybe after the meeting tonight and look at our calendars and hone in on the time we can meet.
Sounds good.
Okay, I have, and I want to share this with the planning board, I have, this is the letter that came to the town from the New Hampshire Office of Energy and Planning and as Ms. Copeland mentioned at the meeting last week or last month, that they came and did an audit of our program and came up with some areas where there were some deficiencies in our land use regulations and it's necessary for us to adopt these changes so that our program will continue to be in compliance with the national guidelines, so that New Market residents can continue to get flood insurance. So this is important that we, you know, move forward with this and what, what is being proposed at this point is really our items to clarify certain provisions in our current regulations that are already in effect and also to update definitions as being required by the federal government, so.
So it doesn't sound like this is maybe, I'm not sure, a lot of work.
Oh, no.
But, but it's important for the, for the town of New Market to be in compliance so they can get the flood insurance, so.
Yes.
If we could move this forward, that would be great.
And what, what is the process again Diane for public hearings and then prior to the board being able to pass this to the-
Okay, there are three pieces to this.
Counsel.
We need to make revisions to our zoning ordinance, our subdivision regulations and our site review regulations. The zoning regulations would be reviewed and proposed and recommended by the planning board to the town council. Typically, the planning board has its own public hearing to get feedback from the public before going forward with the recommendation. At that, after having a public hearing and forming the recommendation, it would then go to the town council and they have their own procedure on how they adopt ordinance changes, including having a public hearing and a first and second reading. So for the zoning, it's really a two-step approach with planning board as well as the town council. For subdivision site review regulations, the planning board can adopt those changes after a duly noticed public hearing and it has to be noticed, I think, 10 days in advance when you need to have the text available for public review at that same time, so it's a more simplified process.
So is it feasible that we could do this at the next meeting and move the process forward?
If-
If we get the committee to, together.
Get the committee together and you have to have, and that would be the public hearing would be next, the next meeting.
We could, we could schedule it if, if the board felt comfortable in doing that or if you'd like to see the document before it goes to public hearing, we could have that scheduled for our March meeting and then schedule the public hearing for April. It would be entirely up to you.
Yeah, let's try and do that. Let's move it forward and maybe Eric and Eric, we can meet after and get a-
Yeah, schedule.
Get a schedule together, okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then the impact study was the third one I had, the impact fees, Val? You and, you and Eric.
No, we're Shoreland.
No, they're Shoreland.
They're Shoreland, okay, sorry. Okay, I didn't have that down on my list.
I have informed the town administrator of the planning board's interest in working on the impact fee ordinance and I would like to contact Bruce Mayberry, who's our consultant who helped us with the first study associated with impact fees, so we can find out what's needed to do this update and try to get a proposal from him, so.
All right.
I don't have anything tonight on that.
Okay. Those are my hit, my-
Your hit list?
My, my hit list, yeah. Anybody else, new or old business?
Charlene?
We're going to try to schedule a meeting for next week.
Yep.
How does Wednesday at 4 o'clock sound? Is that a good time for you, Eric?
Sounds fine, yep.
Okay, that's before a council meeting, so I didn't know if you had something already. Okay, because we'd like to try to get that process started. Cynthia Copeland is available to meet with us-
Okay.
-at that time, so that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I, my only comment is I'm not going to be here in March and Peter's, Peter's up. I will be somewhere else, but I'm very excited about the, the presentation tonight for this development and we just need to be ready to do what, whatever needs to be done to move this forward as expeditiously as possible and I'm sure the rest of the board feels that way, so.
Would it help to facilitate the process by getting a technical review committee appointed and, because then they could, when the application comes in after Diane reviews it, they might be more prepared for a first meeting?
Yeah, we could do that.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Do we have volunteers?
I'd be glad to volunteer.
You're going to be, you're going to be the chairman next month, don't you?
And Janice, we need one more.
I'll be on it.
And Eric, great, thank you very much.
I did, I volunteered.
And Rick will be on, he can be an alternate.
And Rick.
As an alternate, yeah, okay. Okay, great. Anything else under old business and new business? Okay, Janice?
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn. Most I speak all night.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.